Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular school committee meeting of June 30th, 2020. I'm the vice chairman of the school committee. I'm Beverly Griffin Dunn and I will be running this evening's meeting. Mayor Bettencourt, the chairman of the committee could not make this meeting. We are being broadcast live over the PAT channels and we are also participating in a Zoom meeting, which is being recorded. The meeting is taking place with remote participation and it is also being recorded by our recording secretary, Leanna Harris. We will also have public participation as part of our agenda and any member of the public wishing to speak at public participation will be able to through the appropriate link and at that appropriate time. Thank you. At this moment, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if everyone could rise, we will have a moment of silence and after that, we will have a pledge of allegiance. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. This evening, we're going to move to the approval of minutes and then we will be moving straight to the superintendent's report. I'm going to take things out of order, if that's okay with everyone. The mayor requested that as to Dr. Kerbel. So, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 16th, 2020, regular school committee meeting?
Motion to approve regular school committee meeting, June 16th, 2020.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. On Notice. Okay. Any discussion? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. On Notice?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the June 17th, 2020 budget meeting minutes.
Motion to approve budget meeting, June 17th, 2020.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Amico. Okay. Any discussion? Very good. Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. On Notice?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. If there are no objections, we're going to move to the superintendent's report. And Dr. Kerbel, I'm going to let you take it away.
Thank you. Thank you, Beverly.
You're welcome.
So I want to go over a couple of things first and then I want to just say a few words and then that'll be it. I want to talk about the Healing Garden. So there was supposed to be a presentation tonight, but we're going to postpone that and really for a really good reason. I guess the, well, I guess, the Healing Garden Committee has put together a plan and design, but I, all right, but I think it's going to take, it's going to go up a notch. And so that'll be ready probably more so, more so next spring. And I'm really pleased about that and that, you know, the memorial is going to be terrific. And so there'll be no presentation tonight, but I do want to thank all members of the committee, of the Healing Garden Committee. Also want to thank the Healing Committee for the whole year. We hit COVID, we were on a roll, but I really think that the Healing Committee, which will return next, in the fall, under, under Dr. Vedala. I think they can be even more helpful and my wife is willing to stay on, which is good. And she's a good person. She can be helpful. The second thing I'd like to do is talk about two donations. One is the, the personal protective equipment from the, from the PB Fire Department to the Special Education Summer Program. Want to thank Chief Daly for that. Chief was a pretty good quarterback, Josh, in his day. He won't brag, but I can tell you about it. So I want to thank him and ask the school committee to accept his donations with gratitude.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. On Notice?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
And I have to abstain, but that is a really nice donation.
Second is a hundred dollar donation to the West School from Eagle Scout Robert LaSavita. And the, the money is used for four outdoor picnic tables that would be used for an outdoor education for science in the fall and in the spring. And I want to thank Robert Eagle Scout. It's a big deal to become an Eagle Scout. You know, for those that, you know, that have been to a ceremony, you know what it's like. It's been, it's terrific. So please accept the $100 donation with gratitude.
Do I have a motion?
Very much appreciated and make a motion to accept with gratitude.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Second by Mr. Olympia. Roll call vote.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. On Notice?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
That is very nice.
Okay. Thank you. And the last, so you've revealed a last several meetings start thanking my staff and thanking Marj Maurelli and thanking everybody. So I have a few thank yous, but I'm going to make this a little bit different and then I'll, and then I'll be finished with my superintendent's report. So I want to thank my wife. And the funny thing about it is that when I first started, the first day, my first morning, she took my picture and I said, listen, I'm not going to kindergarten. She, you know, straightened my tie. Do you know that she took my picture every school day, right up until COVID-19, we closed schools? Okay. Of course, she sent them to my daughter and family, which was great. So I want to thank her. You know, she was, she's been terrific and I'm glad that she's going to stay on and be part of the Healing Committee. Wanted to thank Chair and Vice Chair of the School Committee especially. I talked to Ted earlier and told him how I felt about him and he was terrific and Beverly, same to you. And it's, and I hope you continue this with Dr. Vedala because when you're supportive like that, like you were to me, it's very inspiring. So I don't mind working hard. I needed this job, but to get the support, I think it's really helpful. And so I want to thank the school committee. When I talked to you one-on-one and I used to call you, you were terrific and you're, and you're very supportive. Now, when we're together a couple of times, I want to tackle you, okay? But I know you mean well. I don't take anything personally, but really I take everything personally. That's how I got here. So I do want to thank you. Even if we disagree sometime, that's okay. Please, please, please support the new superintendent. And if you get mad at him, call him up and tell him you're mad, but don't do it on the air, okay? It'll be really inspiring for him. He's got a long road and he needs your support. And so, and I'm, and I'm not going to thank too many other people because I've already thanked them. And I really appreciate the well wishes. The people sent me emails and it's, and it's been great to be coming back to my hometown and, and to do what I did. And, and I know why I'm here too, which is bittersweet. So I want to thank, this is going to be odd. I want to thank two reporters. I want to thank Thor Ferguson from the Linn item, especially Ethan Forman, because they, all they wanted to do was share good news and they wanted to help out. And so Dr. Vedala, with those two people, that's really terrific. I've been in places where it's not that way. Okay. So I want to, just want to thank the both newspapers for being terrific. And so it's been my pleasure. It has not been easy, okay? But I wouldn't have it any other way. Okay. Not how I grew up. I grew up in PB. So, you know, we were, PB is strong. We're all hard workers. So just thank you all. That's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Through the chair, to you, Dr. Kerbel. I'd like to personally thank you for coming on board. I'm sure you could have never imagined that what you thought would be six months of just keeping us afloat was ever going to turn into a pandemic. You stepped in when we were really hurting really bad, you know, missing Kara and we needed somebody to kind of hold us up and you did that. I really appreciated your gentle demeanor and the way that you handled yourself and the way that you presented to us. So many times, very calm and very sensitive matters that you had to handle. And I can't thank you enough for doing that. I appreciate you. I respect you. I hope that you can enjoy some time off now and I wish you well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. On Notice?
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Dr. Kerbel, thank you for your time here with us. I know this obviously, as, as Ms. Carpenter said, you know, I can't imagine this is what you expected to experience over the past six months, but something I always took note of during our meetings here and then, you know, even off the books when we were all in person, you know, when there was something that would come up and, you know, we'd be trying to get to the bottom of it, you would always turn and say, okay, I'm on it. I'm on it. And you were on it. So I think, you know, that sentiment was always appreciated. And, you know, I know we always didn't see eye to eye at certain points and other times we did. So I appreciate you, you know, riding the waves with us, as you could say. So thank you for your time with the city. I know so many people, including myself, appreciated the work and effort you put in to keep us going over the past six months. So thank you and I wish you well and best of luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Amico?
Thank you. Through the chair, Dr. Kerbel. I just want to thank you. You're a gentleman. We always didn't agree, but that, that's okay. The most important thing is that the two of us cared so much. And what people need to realize is sometimes when two different people care about the same thing, your ideas are different sometimes, but I always had a great deal of respect for you and I still do and I wish you the best and thank you again for coming in, as Ms. Carpenter said, into a very difficult situation that even got more difficult. But you were always there for us. You were always someone that we could call and vent to and, and ask the tough questions and you're a true professional. So thank you so much, Dr. Kerbel.
Thank you.
Mr. Olympia?
Dr. Kerbel, I echo the same, same sentiments as my fellow committee members, but the one thing that sticks out really to me is, you know, when we met in January, we were all pretty down and devastated with what happened with Kara and you really did, you were a common influence in the room. And you at least gave me personally a sense of comfort that we're going to be able to get through this together. And your passion and your effort have never been questioned by me and I just appreciate you steering the ship in really some choppy waters. It was going to be tough based on what you were stepping into with the tragedy with Kara, but then to get thrown with what you had to deal with in March is something I don't think anybody could ever have predicted. And you did a great job just kind of steering the ship and helping out and just always being in ear if, you know, we had something to discuss. So I appreciate that and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Doc, you made it. I don't know. Halfway through this, I'm not sure if you could have envisioned June 30th coming. Couldn't it come fast enough for you, I'm sure? You, you really did help us out an awful lot. You know, not only did we lose Kara in the fall, but we lost Judy Maniatis. You know, we were really devastated as a, as a school system emotionally. We were crippled and, you know, Beverly brought your name up in a meeting and I didn't know who you were at the time and I'm, I'm a better person for knowing you now. You know, we, we didn't see eye to eye all the time and we had, we had our conversations, but we got some good stuff done, Doc. And I appreciate your efforts there and I appreciate you reeling me in from time to time. It was necessary and, and I thank you for that. I wish you well. I hope you enjoy the summer and time with your family and good health and good success to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks, Jared. I appreciate it.
Well, Mark, we're going to have to, we're going to have to let you take, take the night off.
I appreciate it. All right. Dr. Vedala, here's the baton, my friend. You got it. Call me anytime. Enter my office mates. You're the best. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I think one of the nicest things has been how the handoff from one superintendent to another has evolved in this instance. I've been going through old boxes of records and I actually was shocked at how many superintendents I have lived through, you know, as a parent and then as a school committee member. And so as a school committee member, you know, we're always involved in the transition. But I honestly have to say, I don't think, other than the transition from, from Dr. Levine to Kara, because they had worked together for so long, I have never seen a nicer, more positive transition in all the years I've been involved. Your work together is so appreciated because I imagine coming in here is very different and I'm sure it was for you, Mark, as well as for you, Josh. But I think that one thing I hope that the, the new superintendent induction program could do a case study on how you've done this. It, it really is the way things should be by including Josh. Mark, you gave us the benefit of a good transition. And you gave Josh the benefit of all your years of experience, which we also were, were lucky to, to benefit from. And the best thing of all was, yes, I did mention your name at a meeting. But the funny thing is, I never met Mark until the night he came in for the interview. I had never met Mark Kerbel before. I only knew of him. He was a senior in high school and I was in the eighth grade. He played football and I was in the band. And you would hear about Mark Kerbel running the ball. And we used to march from Higgins down to Leo Buckley Stadium because the Cooley Field was not even built back when Mark played football. So he was famous. And over the years, whenever I would hear discussions about superintendent candidates, people always say, oh, Mark Kerbel, you must know him. He's a PBD boy. He's a PBD guy. And I would say, well, I know of him, but I always heard wonderful things. So of course I brought your name up. And then you did end up being recruited by numerous people to come here. And I guess the easiest thing to say is you can take the boy out of PBD, but you can't take PBD out of the boy.
Right, right.
So thank you for all you-
Thanks, everybody. Once a tanner, always a tanner, right?
That's right.
I gotta leave you with this. At least my wife will be happy that I'm not yelling out Joe's name all the time. Be well, everybody.
You too. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay. I'm going to go back to the agenda and we'll go to continuing business. First item is mine, the MSBA Higgins Project. I have nothing new to report. We are still in closeout, but it is coming to an end. So MSBA is working on that. We will hear from them very shortly from what I've been told. Okay. FY20 budget updates. Mr. Scanlon, do you have anything that you'd like to bring forward to the committee?
Yes, I do. Good evening. Went through the admin's budget report today and we're still standing in a, a positive state. What I'm also doing is preparing the journal entry for all the budget offsets that I'll send over. Mike Gingras and Mary Martin for their review and approval. That's something normally that they do, but I want to help them get a jump on closing out the year. The way we stand right now, number is just around 400,000 is my projection, 411,000. And some of the areas that are kind of, you know, expected bonuses obviously is the settlement of the transportation contract for 60%. But the utility bills, we have traditional spending about 150 in the month of June and we have about 500,000 open remaining on that account. So that's, that's a big help as well. Otherwise, everything else is pretty straightforward. So still feeling positive that FY20 is ending in a positive state. Just one other quick note, whether or not you want to adjust the agenda for future meetings on the FY21 budget. It is loaded into the system, so I'll be auditing that over the next few days. Make sure it got loaded correctly. We have, we'll be giving the schools some direction on how to enter POs and I will make a proposal to Dr. Vedala about whether or not we allow them to enter POs or whether or not we're just going to be extremely conservative coming out of the box and just, you know, have them hold off on entering anything at this point in time. So FY21 will be up and running fairly soon.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Scanlon. Does anyone have any questions? Any discussion? Okay. I just have one. This had come up at last, at our budget meeting. As far as keeping the topic on our agenda, would the committee members like to do that and have that as a standing, standing line on our agenda every meeting to be able to discuss the FY21? For, I'm sure we'll have FY20 updates for a little while, but it would definitely be FY21 also. Okay.
I would, Mrs. Dunn.
Okay. Okay, Mrs. Carpenter. Mr. Amico, your hand is up?
Through the chair, you know, especially with hopefully ongoing, ongoing revenue coming in or, or some budget meetings at the State House, I, I think it would make sense to keep it on for the time being, especially during the summer months here and then move forward.
Very good. Okay. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Dunn. I don't mind keeping this on the regular agenda, but we, we don't have a budget right now. We have an appropriation. We need to develop a budget. So I'm still expecting that we're going to have several budget meetings once we do get that information Mr. Amico was talking about and, and Dr. Vedala and Mr. Scanlon are able to provide us with additional information as it comes. I understand it's not available and so I, I'm still expecting to have full, separate budget meetings in July and August, hopefully. Hopefully July if we can, but as the information comes.
Okay. All right. So at this point, oh, Mr. Olympia, sorry. Go ahead, John.
Oh, no. Yeah, I'm just, I'm fine with leaving it on as well. Absolutely.
Okay. So at this point, we will keep that as an agenda item and then if we, if we are going to have specific budget meetings, those would be scheduled separately from the school committee meeting for more in-depth discussion. And we know the budget is a really fluid document at the moment because the situation is, it really is very, very volatile right now. No one knows, I think probably from hour to hour, what's going to happen as far as funding. We're all hopeful that there will be more money coming in and that will be a happy problem to discuss. And we'll be able to, you know, find out what, what will happen with our staffing and our programs and everything going forward for the fall. So we will do that. We will make sure for, for the time being, there will be two, two items for budget updates, FY20 and then FY21. And thank you, Mr. Scanlon. That will be really very helpful for us. I actually did have one question. On the FY20 budget updates and the closeout of the year, will you be giving us a report detailing, you know, where, where the, where the funds stand and what you're able to pay forward so that we can see what, what we were able to do with the FY20 funding?
Yes, I will. That's obviously, you know, the key is the city and I'll follow the direction of Mr. Gingras and Mary Martin. We, I'll provide them with the information I have as it relates to closing out the school budget. And then after everything is processed, the city will have some impact on the account lines for the school budget, but it'll be completely updated. So hopefully your next meeting, I'll be able to give you a more specific status of where the 20 budget ended.
Very good. Thank you. And one other question, it's something that we've talked about, actually, Mr. Scanlon, we talked about it when you, when you first brought on. But I'm, I'm going to ask again, if we could have the, the budget posted on our website so that members of the public can look at it? And then with, probably with a message saying that, you know, this, this budget may, may be updated and that, you know, we would be dating that document so people would know that it was, when it was the most current one. If that could be done, that would be great.
Okay. We, Marjorie did it the day after the city council meeting. So as soon as you go on to the district website, it'll show up right there and you can open it and, you know, take a look at it. So we made sure to post it right away.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I didn't check. I know our IT guys are listening to all of this and they'll be upset that I didn't look website every day. All right. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any other comments on this topic? Okay. Seeing none. The next one, oh, Welch School MSBA project date. I'm very happy to tell everyone that we did receive applications from the designer firms. Currently, the smaller selection panel of the larger Welch School Building Committee is reviewing the three submissions we received. We are working with a grading matrix so that we will have a decision on our ranking of those. The members of the full committee have also been sent copies of these submissions. And we will be holding a meeting tentatively next week to present the full board with the recommendations of the selection panel. At that point, if the order of the selection is approved, the next step will be to go to a scheduled MSBA meeting where an MSBA board will meet with a three-member delegation who will go into Boston or Zoom and will be advocating for the choice of the school building committee on which designer has been chosen and why. The ultimate decision is up to the MSBA. So we're doing our homework and preparing the, the differences of which firm has the attributes that are being looked for by PBD. So you will hear more about that, but the, the, the process is ongoing and it's still on schedule. So thank you. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer. Okay. Next topic. We're still holding on the scholarship, Mrs. Carpenter. Okay. All right. And then redistricting, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. I believe that we have the committee comprised or very close to it. I spoke with Mayor Bettencourt last week. I was hoping to have a meeting, an initial meeting this week, but perhaps we can get it underway next week. If not this week. So we're moving, we're moving forward. It's a slow, slow process, but we're, we're hopefully going to get there.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any questions from the members? Okay. If at any time I miss anyone with a hands up, just unmute and, you know, let me know. Okay. We're going to move into public participation.
Ms. Dunn, could I, I just had a quick question if I could, please. Thank you. Through the chair and I, and I don't see it on the agenda, but can we get clarification on, a letter was sent out to parents, students and, and residents regarding the awards for convocation and graduation. Could we get an update on that at, possibly either tonight or at our next meeting? There was some question regarding whether or not the convocation was going to be a virtual. There was some question regarding whether or not the convocation was going to be a virtual ceremony or in person. I had a couple of questions from residents on that. If Dr. Lord could, thank you.
Dr. Lord has his hand up, go right ahead, Dr. Lord.
Yeah, the graduation committee meets every week, and we have met several times, and we adjust the protocols for graduation based on the latest information we have. The convocation is currently planned to start at five o'clock, and it'll be somewhat like, at least the latest rendition is somewhat like a drive-in. Teachers will, I'm sorry, the parents will park in the teacher's lot, and they'll be facing the the goalposts on the field, and that's where the stage will be set up. Students will get out of their cars to the right and line up along the fieldhouse on that sidewalk and then come across the the goalpost area where the stage would be, pick up their awards, and then come back out through the, where the tickets get sold for football games, then come back into the left-hand side of the cars, and families will get to watch from their, their vehicles. That's the latest plan for it. It'll actually be a little bit of a practice. If, if things go as they currently are, then graduation will look very similar with, with three different groups of students meeting on that Saturday. And again, facing the goalposts and coming out of the cars on the right-hand side, lining up along the fieldhouse, going across the front. Anyway, it, but it changes week to week, and you can keep your prize week to week if you need it. But that's the latest basic logistics of convocation on the thirty-first and graduation on the first.
And if I could, Ms. Dunn, maybe this is something that we can talk about for our next meeting agenda. I know it'd be later on during this meeting. But in regards to graduation, I know, I know some schools have pulled off some full graduations. Austin Prep did it earlier in May where they had all the students on the field. They had parents sitting with kids. Granted, it's a smaller school. But it's something to think about, you know, obviously through, through our public health department. But I, I'd like to maybe have a meeting at some point. I don't know how everyone else feels about it. I, I just believe our, our graduates deserve something that is as close to a true ceremony as we can give them. And I think that was one of the reasons why we moved the date from June fifth to August first. Things seem to be looking a little bit better here in the base date in, in terms of COVID numbers. So I just don't want to eliminate that aspect of possibly having a somewhat, you know, standard graduation that we know of. So I, I would, I would leave it up to the committee to respond on that, or if we can have a meeting in the near future, I'd, I'd welcome that.
Yep, I can keep you updated with respect to the graduation committee's conversations. A number of students, Shannon Cameron, variety of people involved in those conversations, the police on a weekly basis. And it certainly take on more ideas. That's the latest conversation, though, and yeah, certainly welcome to open night. We have another month to, to get this organized.
Okay. Would you even have anything further? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Lloyd, thank you, Mr. Miko. Okay. Going to go to public participation. At this time, we will open the floor to any member of the public who wishes to address the committee. There is a link as an attendee, and I, oh, I see two people have their hands up. So I'm going to-
I can bring in Stacy or Jim.
I would say Stacy Caterina first. Okay, thanks, Dr. Lloyd.
Stacy, you're on.
Hi.
Hi, Stacy.
So first off, I'd like to say congrats to Dr. Vidala on your new position. I'll beface this with saying that I'm sorry that this is going to be your first impression of me. But I gave my compassionate plea in the last meeting, and now things have changed. And I am a frustrated mother first and foremost. So let me begin. My name is Stacy Caterina, and I spoke at the last meeting about my son Carmen, who attends a substantially separate special education class with Mrs. Eileen Messenger. I am here tonight to speak with you about how utterly disappointed I am with the puberty school's special education system. After receiving an email with a survey attached about summer learning, I did not know that that was the concrete plan and was expecting that the survey would give some guidance about having in-class summer school for my son. I was given the confirmation June twenty-sixth on the last Zoom class of the schedule, three days a week of online class for three hours. That is not feasible for my child. I'm also expected to be his one-to-one during this time. And the only two days he gets in class is once a month for ninety minutes. And that's going to give my son some false hope that he's going back to school. And he's not, like, he's only getting one day, and then he's going to be thinking he's going back, and we're going to sit him in front of a computer again, and he's going to have a breakdown like he has been. I work a twenty-four-hour shift as a first responder in this city. And one of those days will be Wednesday, which he's expected to be online. My fifteen-year-old's daughter is not going to be his one-to-one. She's not going to help him sit online. And recording it to have him watch it later with me is not providing him with a live, interactive education. This school district is doing my son a major injustice. His needs are not being met. Sending worksheets home and providing an online class is not an education, and I am not an educator. I cannot provide him with what his teachers can, and nor should I expect it to be. This is why we pay taxes. This pandemic does not absolve you, the school district, from the responsibilities of providing my son with a free, appropriate, public education, better known as FATE. As I stated, I'm not an educator. My son, he has regressed major, and he's resorting back to aggressive behavior. He's no longer using what little language he had. He's, my son is a high-needs, non-verbal child who needs a routine and in-class education. The DESE has a clear guideline on what is to be done with children like Carmen, and you are failing to provide that for him. You are catering to the individuals who want remote learning and leaving our children who need more and can't do remote. I can save you, the school district, money if you provide my son with the free, appropriate, public education he deserves, or we can start looking at outside placement that you will be paying for. I am actually disgusted that it may come to me hiring an attorney Pamela Millman to help with this matter. Lastly, it seems quite discriminatory that you are opening three of our schools, one of them being Higgins, my son's school, to an FKO program Monday through Friday, eight AM till five PM, with ten kids per class and two teachers. They're going to have access to the gym and the science lab because the city is getting paid for this. But my son can't be in a class with three kids and one teacher, four days a week for four hours, and secluded in one classroom with no access to any of the other rooms. I hope we can come to an agreement, and you are able to provide my son with what he needs, and we can base this on an individual class, and not, maybe not everybody needs to be remote. Not everybody, and the people that do want to be remote can stay remote. And by the way, today was the first day with zero positive cases in the state of Massachusetts. I'm just adding that in. So that's all I have, and I really hope we can come to something because my son has lost that light in his eyes, and he's depressed, and he sits in his room the whole entire time. And that's not fair to him, he doesn't deserve this. He doesn't know what COVID is.
Thank you, Ms. Caterina. As you know, the members cannot, cannot respond to what you said, but I think everyone has definitely heard your message. And I think that the, the administration will be looking into this and contacting you. I know your contact information is available at the main office. And incoming Superintendent Dr. Vidala will, will be the person who will, who will be addressing that. So thank you, and thank you for calling in and for speaking with us about that.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Mr. Jim Lawler. Hi.
Yep, hi, Ron. This is Jennifer and Jim Lawler.
Earlier, I emailed the mayor, Dr. Vidala and Carla. We too have serious concerns with how the district is moving forward with ESY for the substantially separate students at the Higgins. And we'd like to discuss these concerns with the committee. We are the parents of Jimmy Lawler. He is in seventh grade at the Higgins in the substantially separate classroom. We attended the last school committee meeting where our parents shared their concerns about summer school and how the effect of not attending school is having an emotional toll on our very mentally fragile children. Stacy Caterina spoke at that meeting about the negative impact this is having on her son, and we certainly share that same sentiment. We've also attended the school ESY work group meeting with Carla and the teachers. We've expressed to the group our concerns with having our son out of school for a six-month period, along with the inability for him to be an online learner. We recently also received notice that summer school would not be in-person and would continue to be asynchronous. Oh, asynchronous, I'm sorry, it's so ridiculous, I can't even pronounce it, learning. The premise behind this district-wide decision stated that the decision was based on the many guidances that the school district received involving maintaining student and staff safety, as well as the need for a variety of additional materials, training, and staff that are difficult to procure during this unprecedented time. We recently learned from another parent that the Higgins will indeed be open this summer and will be running the FKO program out of it. We're having a really difficult time understanding how programs such as these are safe to run out of the Higgins, yet the district's most fragile learners cannot be accommodated. Because of our son's disability and because he is in a substantially separate classroom, he cannot attend FKO. He cannot attend the SNAP playground program. Our son cannot attend summer at the, at the Y. The city is completely shutting these kids out and leaving them behind. Our child is not an online learner. Our child will not be able to sit at a computer for a three-hour period as the district is requiring. And frankly, asking a special-needs parent to attempt the impossible, especially while other children can be accommodated in person, is just tone-deaf at best. Via our advocate and per Joanne Pino, an attorney at the Mass Advocacy for Children, she urges schools to look at the Department of Special Education guidelines dated June seventh that lays out the identification of high-priority students for in-person summer services. The guideline also lays out basic health and safety protocol. And if I could, I just want to read to you section one about the identification of high-priority students from the state. The department recognizes that not all students with disabilities will be able to be served in person this summer. However, it is expected that schools and districts will prioritize the most vulnerable students. In order to do so, schools and districts should consider the nature of the disability and the barrier it imposes on a student's ability to access remote learning. Specifically, of the students who IEPs call for ESY services, the following students should be prioritized for possible in-summer 2020 services. Students with the most significant disabilities who have demonstrated substantial regression during remote learning. Students who receive multiple services during the summer, such as applied behavioral analysis, speech OT, physical therapies, and academic instruction. So at least some of those services can be offered in person. And students who will need more time to learn the new procedures and protocols to increase their successful reentry into school this fall. I, we strongly feel that the Higgins ASD substantially separate room meets the criteria to be identified as a high-priority student. So we are asking the city and district to strongly reconsider how it's handling ESY for our substantially separate students at the Higgins and come up with a reasonable plan where they can be granted equal access to summer programming.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Lawler. You, as you know, as I stated earlier, the committee is not able to discuss this back with you. However, I know that Dr. Vidala could be in touch with you as, if you could send him an email.
Yes. On this email that I sent out today, I'm not sure if he received it, but we'd very much be looking forward to his response.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for bringing this to everyone's attention. We appreciate that. We appreciate you calling in. Thank you. Okay. All right.
There's no other people that have raised their hands? Oh, I'm sorry. Looks like Jim, I'm assuming that's still up. Okay. No one else has their hand up?
Okay, all right, then, then I will close the public participation section of this committee meeting at the time. All right, moving on. Written communications. Well, actually, yeah, written communications. I'm going to be really honest with you, we, we did hear Dr. Kerbel's superintendent's report. Dr. Vidala, would you, would you like to do, would you like to give a brief report or make a statement at this time? Feel free to do so, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I do have something prepared on reopening. I do see it's later in the meeting, so we can, if you want me to do it now, I'm happy to do it now. If you'd like me to wait till the agenda item, I can, I can do it there. If I have the floor, though, I would like to just publicly thank Dr. Kerbel. As you had mentioned, this is certainly unique, but I, I couldn't have asked for a better transition in being involved as much as I have. My official start date tomorrow, I'll be in the office. It seems like I'll be making two phone calls at least to the Lawlers and the Catarinas. But I'm looking forward to starting it, and certainly I really appreciate Dr. Kerbel's efforts in the transition and the committee's welcoming in and, and letting me be part of this prior to the official start date of tomorrow. So I'll defer to you. If you'd like me to wait, I can wait until the agenda item for reopening.
I'll make you wait, I'll never make you wait again, but I'll make you wait tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. Thank you very much. Okay, written communications. We have a communication from the puberty city council regarding a special meeting of July second, 2020. Would anyone like to make a motion to receive that?
Motion to receive.
Okay, motion by Mr. Miko, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. I notice, a second by Mr. I notice. Okay, we'll have a roll call vote on the motion to receive that communication.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes, Mr. Hawkman? Oh, I'm sorry, would you like some discussion on that?
My understanding that the city council is looking to meet this Thursday to talk about polling locations for this fall? Is that what this communication?
That's, that's-
My, my recollection, back in twenty-six, twenty fourteen and fifteen, we moved some polling locations where the Board of Elections moved some polling locations out of the Higgins for obvious reasons, there was construction going on, it was unsafe. And polling locations got moved to the Smith Barn and over to Cavalry Church in Chestnut Street, I think. And twenty sixteen, after the Higgins opened, I, I asked if we can move polling locations back to the Higgins. And I remember some members of the school committee who were now in the city council telling me that that was really beyond our scope and beyond the scope of the city council. It was really up to the Board of Elections to make that determination. It's solely their purview. So I'm just wanting to find, I find it interesting, this seems to be another one of those items of removing goalposts. But we received the document, we'll vote on it.
Okay. Actually, though, if, I, I will, I will tell folks, you know, if I wasn't chairing this meeting tonight, one of the things that, that I would like to know is I can understand the need for the change due to the COVID virus and the restrictions and everything. I, I would like to know which area of the Higgins they would like to use because I, I believe that Mr. Hafee, our facilities director, needs to be included in that conversation. And I will tell you why. The Higgins The Higgins Gymnasium, which is usually, you know, usually the polling places are in the gymnasium. Higgins Gymnasium does have an entrance into it from the outside. However, there's an, there is a very specific entrance. And the way that the building was designed, and people may not realize this, when the architects designed it, they designed it for people to enter the building at the front doors and then to proceed past the cafeteria, down the hall and into the gym. And the reason for that was so that if during the winter people were entering, any salt on their shoes would be worked off the soles by the time it got, by the time they got down to the gymnasium. One of the difficulties in the past few years has been watching people prop open the emergency doors and allow friends to enter directly into the gym instead of using the very small vestibule where there is an entrance. So I definitely would like to hear from Mr. Hafee about the, you know, any difficulties with the use of that building on both occasions in light of bad weather. I don't think we have any salt on the ground in September, but you know, this is 2020 and there's probably going to be a volcano on a P V D square at the rate we're going. So you never know what could happen. But there could be inclement weather. And it all figures in to the traffic flow in that building. And that is something that I would like to ask about and see if those details have been discussed with Mr. Hafee. I think that the security concerns that we have always had, at least this year, would be would be minimized because the schools are closed on the 2nd. And in November, we already had scheduled the professional development day. But again, we have concerns as far as the, if there's any type of a protocol that has to be followed for the cleaning of the building, you know, after, after the voting. So I think we're going to have a lot of questions and I definitely would like to make sure that at that city council meeting that there will be a chance for the school committee members to ask questions as well and to have some, have some input into this decision. I understand it is a very different situation, but I still think that we have a lot to add to that conversation. Would anyone else like to speak? Mr. Amico?
Thank you through the chair. And Ms. Dunn, you make a great point in regards to the possible two locations within the Higgins School where voting would take place. It would either be the gymnasium or more than likely, as you walk into the front door to the right, which is the cafeteria. Personally, I would, obviously, I will support this, but I would support the voting at the Higgins to happen in the cafeteria area just for an easier cleanup. And where those voting booths have to be moved around, we have to remember that the new Higgins has a brand-new wooden floor. And just to keep that safe from scratches and dents and so forth, I would prefer that the voting took place in the cafeteria area where that could be an easier cleanup and an easier exit for residents and voters. But that's something we can discuss with the city council as well, but I'm interested to hear if anyone else has that same thought.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. Good points. Mrs. Capenter?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm one of the members, as you all probably remember, that doesn't really agree with voting in our schools. As I read this letter from the city council, it does, well, from the city clerk, it does look like, you know, they're looking for a change just for this 2020 elections where we wouldn't be in there. And, you know, I have similar concerns in regards to, you know, what part of the building they want to use and, you know, how we're going to clean them and those type of things as well, Mrs. Dunn. So, you know, while I'll vote to accept it, I think we have a lot of questions that need to be answered and I guess we can just move forward after that Thursday meeting. But I just, I'm definitely a little leery about adding any more to our buildings that we don't have to.
Thank you. And I agree, we all have a lot of questions, and I'm grateful that they've invited us to the special meeting. We will, we will probably be able to have a chance to discuss everything with them that night. And actually, I'll make a call to council president Rozignol, just to make sure that that's our understanding is that we would like to be able to be members of the discussion on that.
Yep, Ms. Dunn, to that point, I appreciate your gratitude, but my understanding is that we, as a school committee, determine what use the school buildings have. So I'm less gracious and more interested in our voice at the table, our place at the table. I don't want to be invited to a meeting where we're just listening. I appreciate the city clerk's predicament and, you know, this year's pandemic and issues going on with it. A lot of arguments that were made in years past where we don't want to change polling locations year after year because we already have a difficult time with the percentage of voters who actually go to polls to vote. And I'm sure the Board of Elections worked hard to put a plan together to make this as safe as possible, and I'm not going to really comment on that right now. But I would think that we would have a voice at the table and not just an invitation.
Okay. Actually, I'll be honest, it would have been a wonderful topic to go through Mr. Anotes' committee, subcommittee, on the Subcommittee on Liaison, and I think it might just be something with the timing, because I know that they have to report into the state by a certain date for the primary. And, you know, I think, I think that we will definitely be able to speak at that meeting. We have to be. We have to be. So, you know, I look at it as, you know, imitation to be able to be present there and to work this through with them. Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. It's to accept the letter. Oh, Mr. Amico, I'm sorry.
Sure, Ms. Dunn, just one more item on this. Thank you through the chair. The way I see it is, this actually may help us as a district, as a school department, where we'll only have to really clean two schools on those two days, September 1st and November 3rd, which are both non-student days. And I think that would allow the custodians and our cleanup crew to really focus in on those two buildings versus, you know, getting the McCarthy and the other buildings of the West and the Burke, and the other polling locations cleaned for the next day, which would be a school day. So in a sense, this probably helps us out a little bit. That's all I wanted to add, where this is only two locations versus the, I believe, five, five buildings that we, four or five buildings that we utilize during our normal voting days.
That's true. And actually, any COVID-related costs to the cleanup or any of the costs incurred by this are reimbursable by the state? Mr. Anotes, go right ahead.
Oh, thank you. No, just a quick comment. Yeah, no, I agree. I would have preferred this to go through the Subcommittee just because I think it would have been a better opportunity to answer some questions that it sounds like everyone seems to have related to this. And perhaps, you know, Thursday might, might have been able to go potential a little bit smoother, because we would have had answers to questions that we might have come up on Thursday. But I also, I get the sense that timing is important here and that they're adapting as they go. I, you know, I have heard there have been some issues just even with having the number of poll workers that the city is used to having. So I think we have to adapt to that. I am comfortable, you know, with them using the Higgins, obviously, we need to deal with the logistics on this. It obviously, to me, seems like a special circumstance. I know there's history with this. I don't have any issue with this in general. You know, again, I would have liked us to have a little bit more discussions, but I don't know when this plan was necessarily adopted. So I appreciate that it may have been a timing thing. You know, I hope we can iron this all out on Thursday. And it does sound like, from my understanding, we may need to have a vote. I know it doesn't say in our communication, but my experience here and basing off what you all are saying, we do have to give permission for them to use the buildings for this. So I think we'll have to definitely hammer down the cleaning process, especially for November, so that everyone going back is in good shape. So hopefully, those questions are ready to go on Thursday.
Very good. Good point. Okay. Is there anything else? Are we ready to vote on receiving the document? Okay, gonna have a roll call vote on that.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Anotes?
Yes.
Mrs. Capenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll go into Subcommittee Reports, Education Subcommittee. Any report?
No report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hockman. Finance Subcommittee. Mrs. Capenter?
Nothing to report right now.
School Safety Committee?
Nothing new to report.
Thank you. Athletics and Wellness?
Nothing new to report.
Okay. Quality and Standards Subcommittee. The Quality and Standards Subcommittee met this evening at 7:00 prior to tonight's school committee meeting. We had two main discussions. They were about the, the first discussion was, we're still working on the language for policies surrounding the interrogation and questioning of our students. And we are working on three different levels. We're going to look into whether we need to update the memorandum of understanding with the police department. M A S C is helping us. They have some model language which we'll be using. And our timeline is to have this done by the end of July so that it can be completed in time for inclusion into this year's student-parent handbooks. Then we also spoke about the policies regarding online and communications by staff and with staff and students. We're working on that as well in conjunction with looking at faculty handbooks and any videos that are used to train teachers so that we can make sure we coordinate, get the right language together on those. And we are going to work on that in line with that same goal of completing this by the end of July. And a point that was brought in by Mr. Amico was about political discussions and being able to have something there, giving guidance on how teachers should interact with students with the online communications regarding, you know, political discussions and how to, how to handle those. And just to make sure that everyone is helping to guide students in making up their own minds and being free to make their own opinions, but to be ever mindful of the role of teacher and the role of student. So if Mr. Amico, Mr. Olympia, or Mr. Anotes have anything to add, I'll open it right now if you'd like to add to that, that report. They were, they were the members present. And we worked on this with Dr. Vidala as well and with Dr. Lord. Okay, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Dunn, and thank you to the members that were able to make that meeting tonight. I appreciate the timeline that you put forward and the amount of effort you're putting into this, these important topics. In a related matter to the second item you brought up, we met a few weeks ago regarding a couple of investigations that were taking place. And I was just wondering if the administration knew when we were going to be getting some more information on those investigations. I think we had all asked for it, and I don't know that, I don't think I've seen anything. So I'm not looking for anything specific tonight, but if the administration is able to respond to when we will get information, I'd appreciate it.
Just as a point of information, as it involves personnel, that may be something that has to be handled in a very specific manner. And I think we'll, we'll have to wait for Dr. Vidala to get back to it.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. I think I got my message out, and I'm, would expect that I'd get a response at some point. Thank you.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you. Moving on, let's see, the next item.
Mr. Olympia has his hand up, Ms. Dunn?
Oh, oh, sorry, John, go ahead. Mr. Olympia?
Yeah, just back to your first point, too, and also, you know, we discussed relationships online with teachers and students to be, you know, mindful of communications on Facebook or other social media outlets, friend requests, things like that, alienate students that might not be friends with a teacher, what's appropriate, what's not. I think a lot of that has to be addressed and has to look at. And, you know, that was something that, you know, we certainly discussed. That's it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Olympia. Okay. Next item, Liaison to Parent and Student Advisory Boards. Nothing to report, although I will say that it's sad, because this is usually the meeting where we thank all these people for all their hours of involvement and attendance of meetings. And we missed meeting with them, and hopefully, next year, we'll be able to do that. Okay. Building and Ground Subcommittee, Mr. Amico?
Thank you through the chair. Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Special Education Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympia?
Nothing new to report.
Okay. And Mr. Anotes, Liaison to City Council and Legislative Delegation?
Nothing new to report.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move into New Business. And the first item on here is a proposed resolution. It's in part of your packet. It is a social, economic, about social, economic and cultural bias in our schools. This was a resolution that was recommended by M A S C. They are trying to bring these forward. As I said, normally, resolutions are put in and heard at the, at the conference in the fall, in November, but they are looking for these now. This has been revised and made P V D specific. And I will, I will let you know that the, you probably all received the copy of the basic resolution. I brought this forward and I put some, a lot of time into thinking of the appropriate terminology. One of the things that I wanted to bring this forward for is because over the years, I've been contacted by different students and their families who felt that they had experienced some type of inequitable treatment in our system. And as a school committee member, we have to follow the chain of command and bring that information forward appropriately and direct people to the appropriate areas where they can have that handled. Recently, because of all of the protests going on and in relation to the George Floyd murder, I have received a lot of private messages from former students, students who have graduated, who have contacted me. Many of them were student leaders that we've all met during the years as they've served on Student Advisory Board or as class officers or just in general, leaders in their classes. And they've come forward privately with, with information of things that they experienced in high school and things that they and their friends have been discussing, and they would like to see those taken care of. When I wrote, when I adjusted this resolution, this was strictly on social, economic and racial justice in our community. I added the word "cultural" for cultural biases, because I think that that's important. We live in a city that takes pride in being a melting pot, and we have a very well-known event, the International Festival, which celebrates the ethnic heritage of so many people in P V D. There are all kinds of celebrations in P V D, recognizing various ethnic groups. There, there's the flag raising on the lawn at City Hall in honor of so many different, different ethnic groups and cultures. And we do that with a lot of pride, and really, it's part of what makes P V D special. Growing up here, you get to know people from all over the world, and you get to know people who are very proud of their heritage. And, you know, they express that in so many ways with their music and their dance and their food and just being, just being proud Americans and celebrating their backgrounds. But we also know that there are people who may not understand that, may not appreciate that. And sometimes there are people who just make a mistake and may not realize that they're saying something that can be hurtful or culturally insensitive. And it all gets down, in my opinion, it all gets down to training and knowledge and having an open mind to understand. training and knowledge and having an open mind to understanding and how best to get along with other people. So what I would like to do is to ask this committee to support this resolution. It is, as I said, PBD-specific. And along with it, I would like to make some proposals and I'll, I'll tell you in general and then I'll bring them forward. In addition to this resolution, I would like to ask, and Dr. Vidala, this is gonna fall on you now. I'd like to ask that we could have an Equity Task Force for our school district and to have an examination of our programs and our practices to make sure that we are providing equity to all our students and to our staff to be able to educate everyone and to make sure that we're ensuring that people feel comfortable, that they feel safe and that they feel appreciated for their, uh, their, their culture, their race, their social status, their economic status. I'd also like to ask for professional development on equitable education for our teachers and our students and their families because it is a partnership. And we have to be able to make everyone aware of how best to work together. And then I would also like to ask, and I know this is ongoing, but I would like to ask that we have our curriculum reviewed to find out where we can best put information in front of our students and staff. One piece of this resolution speaks of providing histories of racial and ethnic oppression and works by Black and ethnic authors and works from diverse perspectives. And I know that's ongoing, but I think we need to bring that forward so that people understand what we're doing and we need to make sure that we're doing it well and that we are making sure that people understand why we're doing that. And I also think we need to look at our practices and policies to make sure that we have in place the appropriate avenues for people to, uh, to come forward if they feel that they have not been treated with, with respect and dignity. If we have someone who feels they have been discriminated against, to be able to have something in place now where people can go and, and follow through. And in the end, I am hopeful that this will help make our school district a much better place for everyone involved. So unfortunately, I'm sitting here as the chair and I'm addressing this, but I would like to open this up to any discussion among the members, uh, about, you know, first about the resolution, but also about the ideas that I'm bringing forward for an Equity Task Force, professional development, a review of the curriculum and a review of our practices and procedures. So if anyone would like to speak, or actually if you'd like, we could start with you, Dr. Vidala. Whatever, whatever works best for everyone.
Sure, I'll jump in and I appreciate that. I think that this is not only, uh, extremely relevant and timely, uh, but it is of the utmost importance. I think this is something that as a school district we strive for. And, you know, I think the idea of an Equity Task Force is, is important. And I think a lot of districts are doing equity audits. And that is something that could inform all of the other things that you're, that you were speaking of. It could inform professional development in the areas that we need. It could inform curriculum materials. Uh, so I would certainly be on board with that. I think the Equity Task Force can dig in and we want to make sure that it is a diverse group of people and has stakeholders from the community, parents, students involved. I know that the, uh, PTSO is doing some great work at the high school and those students have, uh, we've been able to lift their voice. And I think that it is our job, uh, as a committee and, and as, as central office administrators, I know that I speak for Dr. Lord as well, that it, it's our job i- in our positions of privilege and our positions of power to be able to lift up the voices of those who don't, you know, um, have that platform. And, you know, I, I'm definitely committed to do that and, and I'm happy that the committee is taking this on and, and I will do so wholeheartedly. And I know that, uh, Mr. Anotis had his hand up and let's see some other members do, so I'll, I'll turn it over to them, but I'm excited to start that work.
Thank you, Dr. Vidala. Mr. Anotis?
Thank you. Um, first of all, let me begin by thanking you for, for bringing this motion, uh, or I should say this, uh, resolution and this topic to, um, our meeting here tonight. I will support the resolution and, you know, if you're, you as the chair can't make the motion, I'm happy to make the motion to bring it forward. And I also strongly agree that, um, I think, how did you phrase it? Did you say Equity Task Force or something related to that, however you phrased it? I think is, is very pertinent and timely. You know, I had attended the event, um, the rally at Emerson Park probably two or three weeks ago now. And, you know, they had, um, you know, kind of an open mic situation. I don't know a handful of folks who got up to speak, but the vast majority of them were our own students who stood up and, um, expressed themselves and, you know, made points that, you know, they had experienced, um, discrimination and other instances of being, uh, put out, you know, in our own building. And, you know, I was, the folks I was standing with, you know, we were all at a distance, but, you know, we kind of turned to each other and said, wow, you know, how brave are these students to come forward and express that this is what they're experiencing? You know, it was really something because you had, you know, crowd, they were actually, they were in front of the mayor and the chief and some of our other officers and they stood there and they had themselves be heard. And I thought to myself, wow, you know, these kids are brave enough at that age to, um, stand up there and say what they are experiencing, which, um, you know, I'm sure there are others who are not willing to stand up but didn't admit to that because they're afraid of what would happen. Um, you know, I thought that was something to be proud of, of our students. And I think we owe it to them to, um, put together a group to address any issues, um, that folks might be feeling in that building if they're feeling that, you know, they're being treated differently because of who they are. Um, you know, we don't want that to happen. We don't support that. So, you know, we can start the process of correcting anything that needs to be corrected and going down, um, a path to look at those things in our own backyard and, you know, do our own work here. I think that's a good thing. So I'm supportive of this and, you know, I'm happy to make that motion and go from there. So thank you for this.
You're welcome. Mr. Amico?
Great, thank you through the chair. Um, thank you, Ms. Dunn, for bringing this, uh, resolution, uh, forward. Uh, thank you, Mr. Anotis. I, I agree with what you said and, uh, and thank you to Dr. Vidala for the words that you had, uh, said as well. Um, I think with the quality and equity, um, you have to have communication, you have to have collaboration. And I think those are two keys. And I think, um, PBD does a nice job of doing that. I think we will be better in the future. Um, we have a great administration team. We have a great central office team, um, leaders who, uh, communicate, again, who collaborate and who also delegate, and that's important. Uh, whenever you're talking about, uh, cultural bias or, or social, economic issues, those are keys to, to bring people together, to get people involved, to communicate and to collaborate. So I look forward to this and, um, I think this will be a great thing for the city of PBD. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Amico. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Um, Mrs. Dunn, thank you for bringing the resolution forward. You know, as I'm reviewing it, one of the things that really sticks out to me is, um, the professional development of our staff in this regard. You know, we just heard Mr. Anotis talk about some of the rallies that have been taking place. And a lot of those rallies are, are students. They're very young, impressionable, um, children, kids. And, you know, one of the things that, that I really want to focus on is that when we get our kids in front of our staff, in front of our teachers, that they're equipped to handle teaching them, properly with no bias, with no personal opinion, no personal agendas. That if we're going to promote the social, economic and racial justice of our community, that we're promoting it properly for all walks of life, for all professions, for all races. And we're making sure that, that our staff isn't, um, promoting their own personal opinions and their own personal agendas. And, you know, it's been a very difficult time for some people. There's a lot of, um, a lot of hurt, a lot of sensitivity. There's, there's a lot going on and, um, we have to just make sure that our staff is fully equipped to handle that without damaging any of these impressionable minds that are now marching and protesting and having rallies. So one of the most important things of this resolution, and, you know, if we're gonna make this committee up, Dr. Vidala, is that that professional development is very serious and very intense and really covers who our students are gonna be listening to, um, in this coming school year in regards to all of these, um, injustices. So I just want to make sure that that's, that's a really big key piece for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mr. Olympia?
No, thank you, Ms. Dunn, and thank you for bringing this resolution, uh, to the table. I will certainly be behind it, support it. Some of the other committee members have stole some of my thunder. But I do, uh, I do stress too that professional development for the teachers and the staff because, you know, at times it's, the students are the least, uh, of the people that I worry about. The students always seem to rise above a lot of things and they really do represent PBD well, proud of our students and on many issues. But, uh, I do think that the staff needs, uh, that professional development and make sure that they are, you know, conveying facts and messages and not, you know, personal agenda. So, uh, I echo what Ms. Carpenter just, uh, said. So thank you.
Mr. Olympia? Mr. Hoffman?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Dunn. The, one of the concerns I have with the, with the resolution is it, it may be too narrow in focus. Um, it, it doesn't address some of the other discrimination that I think takes place in our school system, uh, whether it be sexual preference or religious, um, bias, uh, or political bias. You know, uh, your, your sentiment is, is strong and, and it's meaningful, but I, I don't want it to appear as if we're, um, excluding any of the other issues that, that are really present that I've heard from students and parents in years past and recently, um, that, that take place, um, some from staff members and some from other students. So, uh, Dr. Vidala, I, I would just ask if, if I can through Ms. Dunn, that your, uh, i- i- it sounds like we're gonna approve some ad hoc committee for an Equity Task Force or, or something along those lines, that it be as broad of a scope as you can possibly imagine and, and not limited to some of the criteria identified in Ms. Dunn's very well-written and articulate resolution. Um, I just think that there's, the, 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 the net needs to be cast wider and, and, um, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to, uh, a point in time where we, we get past this and, and we can actually, uh, you know, sing John Lennon songs and read Martin Luther King's speeches, um, meaningfully. So thank you, Ms. Dunn. Thank you, Dr. Vidala.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. I will, I will tell everyone that, um, I will be honest. When I was, uh, adjusting what MASC had put out as a, you know, a basic document, I actually was looking to make it broader. However, on the issue of, uh, you know, the, uh, the, the issue of like sexual preference and, and, um, even sexual harassment, any of those types of things, we do have training currently and we have policies on the books. But of course, this came up because of, of racial discrimination. And so I looked up the word racism. I really wanted to make sure that it was, you know, the appropriate word to cover a lot. And I was surprised, this is, this is actually what I found for the dis- for the, uh, excuse me, the meaning. Prejudice, discrimination or antagonism directed against a person or people on the basis of their membership of a particular racial or ethnic group, typically one that is a minority or marginalized. And I was, I was impressed by that, uh, because it spoke not just to racial but to ethnic groups as well. And I think that that's important right now because we have so many students of varied backgrounds. If you look at our, uh, breakdown on the, the, uh, DESE report card and you can look at all the categories of, of, uh, of people by race, by, um, how people identify. It's very interesting when you see the number of students we have and the discrepancy between the reflection of people of those backgrounds in our staff. And a lot of what I am hopeful that this resolution would do is to open, open the door to in- in- increased and improved professional development in the area of discrimination on so many bases and not just limited to one area or another or another. That's why the word equity to me is most important because when you try to pigeonhole people into a specific race based on color, you also have to accept cultural differences. You have to accept the ethnic groups. And here in PBD, we have a lot of different ethnic groups, children coming from different backgrounds. And, uh, we, we just need to teach that respect from, from the early ages on up because, uh, it, it is something that people learn. It is something that people can learn. And so, uh, crafting this resolution, as I said, I, I definitely checked the vocabulary to make sure that it was inclusive and not just limited. And, um, I'm, I'm glad that we do, we do work currently in the district on specific areas. And this, I think, is going to broaden it to cover more and especially the areas that are just so, so vital right now in, in our, our country. Our children are seeing what's happening and we need to work with them and make it, make the world a safer place for them. So, Mr. Anotis, would you like, would you like to proceed with the motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Amico? Thank you. All right. You've heard the motion. The motion is to, uh, to approve the, uh, resolution in support of social, economic and racial justice in our community. Ms. Harris, can we have a roll call vote of that?
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Anotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And, um, I, I would like to propose a res- propose a, a motion, that an Equity Task Force be established, the professional development on equity for our teachers and as well as our students be implemented, that a review of our curriculum be conducted to make sure that we are providing equitable instruction and that we examine our practices and policies to make sure that we are following through on the, the words of this resolution. Um, would anyone like to make that motion for me? Mr. Anotis, can I tap you again?
Yes, that's fine.
Ms. Dunn, on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Hoffman.
I'll second it so we can have a discussion. Um, can I ask that the curriculum piece of what you're describing get put, placed into my Subcommittee on Education? I think it's a good forum.
Actually, it could. I was just actually thinking to just turn this over to Dr. Vidala and to let him, let, let him handle all of this as he, as he sees fit. And I know that the curriculum revisions and curriculum examination always is ongoing. So, um, at the moment, I think, uh, I think we should let Dr. Vidala decide and then perhaps he would want to put it into a Subcommittee. But at, at this time, I think he needs a chance to, um, he needs a chance to come on board in what, two, two and a half hours now, Josh?
No, uh, that, that's fine. Uh, curriculum is the purview of the committee, not the administration, so, uh...
Right. We're gonna make him do the work for us.
We'll get to it, Dr. Vidala.
Okay. All right. So motion made by Mr. Anotis, seconded by Mr. Hoffman. Roll call vote, Ms., Ms. Harris?
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Anotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And Dr. Vidala, you mentioned an equity audit. That would probably cover all four of those areas, wouldn't it? In a way?
Yes, and I think that it would make sense to develop a task force to really understand what we're looking for. And then if we're looking to do an audit, you would have an outside group that would be able to come in and do some focus groups, do some record review, uh, do some individual interviews. And then, you know, they might survey people, uh, but it's, it's a deep dive into it. And the task force could then develop an RFP that would really delineate what exactly we're looking for. And then we could put it out and see if that is... And then we could put it out and see if that is something that the committee would like to do. And it could have each of those subgroups and we'd get a nice report that we would be able to, you know, hold up and then have some action steps and some, and some recommendations that we could then go forward on.
All right, we're just late for you, aren't we? Here we go. All right. Moving on to the next item, the reopening of schools. There you go. This is the one you've been waiting for all night. All right, Mr. Amico, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Through the chair and, you know, obviously we'll be opening schools. It depends on what capacity. And I had reached out to Dr. Vidal, I had reached out to the mayor, I had reached out to Dr. Kerbel as well, and just trying to, you know, gauge some feedback here. And Dr. Vidal was nice enough to put together a PowerPoint to answer some of the questions I had and possibly some of the questions that other school committee members have and the public has. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Vidal through the chair.
Absolutely. Go right ahead, Dr. Vidal.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. So, Dr. Lord, if you wouldn't mind pulling up that PowerPoint and, you know, to, to the committee and to the people out there. On Thursday, the commissioner's office put out the initial guidance for the fall reopening and looking to reopen our schools. So, on Friday, Dr. Lord and I were able to attend a meeting with the commissioner where he explained the guidance and talked a little bit about, you know, what some next steps are. And so today, I just wanted to give a brief overview of where we are in terms of reopening our schools, understanding that the context of this is taking a look at where we've been through the school closure and the remote learning and realizing lessons learned that nothing can, can really replace the in-person teacher's relationship with a child and understanding that we, we can't, remote learning cannot replace in-person instruction. And so as we look at the guidance, we really need to take that into account as well as the health and safety precautions that are provided by the medical professionals. So, next slide, please. So, the DESI guidance that we got on Thursday is asking districts to prioritize the safe return of students to in-person school settings to maximize learning and address the students' holistic needs. So, we understand, we heard some, from some parents tonight that have concerns. And I think within the context of equity, the conversation that we were just having, we really understand that not only the academics, but the social, the emotional, and the behavioral health needs of our students are not being addressed when they're home. Families do a wonderful job. And I think we also need our schools to be able to provide some of that instruction. So, the initial memo that we got is a portion of it. It's not the full guidance. It's something that we will be getting more information as it comes out. But we really want to start and let everyone know, our ultimate goal is safely returning students to in-person instruction. And we also want to take into account the safety of our faculty, of our families, and making sure that we're following the medical professionals' guidance and the regulations. So, we have some health and safety requirements for in-person learning that the department has put out for us. We will be developing reopening plans and that will address different types of learning models that I'll go through. And then there'll be more guidance that I'll discuss at the end that will be coming out in specific areas where we have more questions. So, next slide, please. And so our ultimate goal for the fall is the safe return of as many students as possible to in-person school settings. And we really want to maximize learning and maximize our students' holistic needs. So, we want, want to look at not just the academics, but the social and emotional piece. So, I showed this graphic here. It's going to look different than, than it did previously. We will need to practice social distancing. We'll need to spread desks out. We'll need to configure our classrooms in a different way. But our ultimate goal is to be able to try to return as many kids safely into the buildings so that the kids' needs are addressed, the families' needs are addressed, and we can reopen the economy and people can get back to work and we can go on as, as best as, as we can. So, next slide, please. So, the real key to returning safely, the commissioner had a small task force of people that he put together, including some medical professionals. And being able to return safely not only includes some, some different precautions, what we've learned is it's not just one thing that will mitigate the risk of, of returning to school. These four things on the screen right now are really the best things to do in conjunction with one another. So, the first thing is masks and face coverings. At this time, all adults in the building, when we return to school in the fall, will be required to wear masks or face coverings, as well as all students in grades two and above. They are also recommending that kindergarten and first graders wear masks, but due to their age, they are, you know, that right now is a recommendation, but it's a requirement for, for grades two and up. And this is the current medical guidance that we have right now. The second thing is physical distancing. So, in conjunction with face coverings, physical, physical distancing can mitigate the virus transmission. So, the goal is to aim for six feet apart. But what recent studies have shown us is that putting desks three feet apart with the other mitigating factors is, is also an appropriate distance. So, there's evidence that shows us that by putting desks three feet apart, maintaining face coverings, and then as well as the next one, hand washing and hand sanitizing, that would be our best option to be able to return to school safely. The final thing is we're really going to have to lean on families and our faculty that when you are sick, if you're exhibiting symptoms, you have to stay home. And that's going to enable us to open for longer and to be able to, you know, address some of, some of these concerns. What we've seen across the Commonwealth is that we've done a really good job as a state of really minimizing the number of cases and really flattening that curve. And we've done so because of these social distancing, face coverings, and hand washing, and people who are sick staying home. We're going to need to continue to do that so that we don't see an additional spike. And we're going to continue to look at the medical professionals in order to be able to do that. Next slide, please. So, the real key that we want to make sure that families understand, because we do know that families and our staff are going to be nervous about returning. But one of the reasons why this guidance has changed recently is some new studies that have come forth from, from Europe and throughout the world that, that have these four factors here. And one, the main thing that the studies have shown us is that schools do not appear to have a major role in COVID-19 transmissions. So, they, they've really reviewed it and schools don't seem to be a big place as places in the, in the world have opened up their schools. They're not seeing large transmissions through the schools. The second piece is in general, children have a much lower rate of infection than do adults or at-risk populations. So, based, based on the analysis, children under 20 are, seem to be far less susceptible to the COVID-19 infection. The third piece is when kids do become infected, they are less likely to have significant symptoms. So, it seems as though the medical research is showing us that the virus does not affect children under 18 the same way it affects adults. So, if they do, in rare cases, get infected, they don't see as a significant spike. And the final and probably most important piece is that children are less likely to infect others with COVID-19. Prior to this, we, we were hearing or we had thought that children were super-spreaders or asymptomatic spreaders, and the recent research shows that that is extremely rare. And so, these four pieces of, of research that we've gotten from the medical professionals has really led us to believe that we can safely open the schools as long as we follow the medical advice. Next slide, please. So, one of the tasks that we have is that each district needs to plan for three possible, three possibilities on the continuum of reopening. So, the first one, which we're talking primarily about tonight, is in-person learning. And that in-person learning will be with these new safety requirements. And so, one of the next things that we're going to do with each school is develop a feasibility study about what that would look like if we were able to follow these guidelines. The second model that we'll have to look at is a hybrid model, if it's a portion of in-person and remote learning. And so, we'll need to, and this is where the week on, week off, or A and B type schedules would be in a hybrid model. So, as I stated before, our goal is to return in-person, but we also have to have a contingency plan if there was a spike, if we need to go to a hybrid model. And finally, we do need to have a plan for remote learning. And that would be available for students who cannot yet return in-person, whether it's because of a medical condition or other reason, or in the event of another spike, we need to have a plan in place so that we're not taken by surprise as we were in March. So, we would need to have these three plans and we would need to send those to the Department of Ed in, in August. So, next slide, please. So, in terms of next steps, the way that I'm envisioning this and the way that, that we've been thinking about this is, Mr. Hockman had mentioned prior in, in the previous school committee meeting, and I know people have supported this, of having a, a return to school task force. And that would be a high-level team that would be developing policy. And I'll talk about these in the, in the coming slides. In addition to the task force, which would be a small group, we would need to have a larger group, which would be a reopening working group, which would be comprised of a bigger group on planning and development. And finally, each school will be required to have a COVID team, which would need to have a point, a point person, whether it's a principal or, or a school nurse, and it would be comprised of, of other individuals. So, next slide, please. So, in thinking about the return to school task force, this would be comprised of about eight to 10 members. And they would really focus on policy and communication around the return to school. And the members would be, for example, superintendent, the mayor of the school committee, some board of health and medical professionals, people within our facilities, our transportation. We would need to have representatives from teachers and other school staff, families in the community, and then any additional members that would, that could help us inform policy and communication. So, that would be the high-level group that would really focus on the development of those policies and communication and speaking to the school committee. Next slide, please. The next group would be the reopening working group. And this would be a, a larger group that we'd be working on planning and development. And so, really developing these reopening plans. And we'd need a much greater working group, so probably about 40 to 50 people, which would include school and district administrators, teachers and school staff, parents, students, community members. There'd be members of the task force that would be on the working group, and then any additional members that could help inform the planning and development for the reopening of schools. And next slide, please. And finally, each school would have a school-based COVID team. So, in all, it would be approximately 100 members that would be working on these teams, about eight to 10 per school. And they would be focused on planning and the implementation of these plans. And so, we'd have a principal, we'd have the school nurse, custodial staff, teachers and other school staff, parents, students, and the, any other members that might inform the planning and implementation of these health and safety guidelines. So, next slide, please. And then, we're, we're expecting the additional guidance to come out in the coming weeks. So, in addition to what I have listed here, the feasibility study will be the first thing that we do. I'll be talking to principals tomorrow morning and we'll be starting to, to stage classrooms and to really see what would they look like under these new guidelines. So, we're really going to hit the ground running tomorrow morning. We'll also do that feasibility study that we'll be working. We have some diagrams of different potential classrooms with three feet of distance, chair to chair is, is what we're being told today. And then the coming guidance that we'll see, some fall reopening guidance should be coming out as far as a checklist, the process for handling a positive COVID-19 case within our school community, some remote learning resources. The, the state is looking to purchase an online learning management system that districts could purchase licenses from. There'll be more guidance coming about facilities and operations around cleaning protocols and around, you know, different things that we'll need to do within our facilities to prep. There's going to be guidance on transportation. Right now, that, that hasn't come out. We're expecting that in the next couple of weeks. We are expecting final guidance on summer programming this week. So, that can help inform our next steps. And then we're also expecting guidance on special education programs or English language learner and, and other at-risk groups to make sure that we are addressing their needs and providing appropriate supports. Additionally, there'll be further guidance coming to us. I know that the, the department is working with the MIAA on athletics, but also extracurricular activities such as band and chorus and choir and other electives that might be happening during the school day, what that would look like, and different key policies. There will also be further guidance coming from the department. So, it seems like every day we're getting new guidance and we're adjusting to it. But this is the first really big overall guidance that we've gotten about the fall. So, in, in terms of that, I'll turn it over to the committee to see if you have any questions or comments. But please know that we will be, it's a work in progress and we'll be continuing to work on it. And the communication will be forthcoming. We'll, we'll try to provide as much as we can as, as we go on. So, Mrs. Dunn, if, if the committee has any questions or comments, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Vidal. I appreciate this. Okay, Mr. Olympia.
Yes, through the chair. Dr. Vidal, thank you so much for that very informative presentation. I know it's still a work in progress. And I know that you'll still be waiting for guidance from the state as the summer goes on. Couple of questions I have is, is the staff, you know, the teachers, are they going to be trained or are they going to have some type of professional developer, development and like discipline? Because what, what I, what I fear is so much, it's maybe second, third, fourth grade is, some of these kids just aren't going to want to keep their mask on. And at what point, you know, a teacher's going to be trained in how to deal with this? Are parents going to be getting calls every other day? And, you know, in some cases, you really can't blame the children if they're just not comfortable or used to wearing a mask for most of the day. Now, I know there's going to be mask breaks, but I just don't want, you know, I hate to see this develop into a situation where, you know, just it's the kids that are suffering. And I'm just wondering, I hope that the teachers are going to have some training in this and how to deal with these situations. And I am actually looking forward to seeing how they're going to deal with, not so much the teachers, but what the state's going to come down with directive as far as special education. Because there is a number of students that, you know, just aren't going to be able to wear a mask all day. And they're not, you know, they, they just don't understand. And it's certainly not a defiance issue or a discipline issue. So, I'm just wondering how the state's going to come down with something with special education children, especially in the elementary schools. So, those are kind of the concerns that I would have. And hopefully, you know, that you get more guidance on this. Any thoughts, any preliminary thoughts you have on that?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Olympia. So, we will be, be providing professional development at the start of the school year. There may be guidance from the commissioner. He's working with the teachers' unions around if there's a potential to reduce the 180-day requirement, maybe to 177 days and have three days upfront. One thing we are very fortunate in PBD is that we already have four built-in days at the beginning of the school year for professional development. So, we can capture some of that time and, and really work with families and work with teachers around what is it going to look like? What they have found is that as schools have opened across the world, that with some training and with appropriate breaks, that the majority of students can become accustomed to wearing a mask for short periods of time and then having a break. And of course, it would, as kids get older, they can tolerate more time. In, in terms of our special populations, we know that some kids will not be able to wear masks and there will be some additional supports to, to put in place and some other safety measures for the staff that work with those students. And just to make sure that we are providing enough safety on both ends, we want to make sure that the kids are safe. And we want to make sure that the families are safe when the kids go home and that the adults in the building are safe. So, we will have more guidance coming out. This was a lot for people to digest now. So, we're trying to put it out slowly in waves. But this, these are definitely concerns and they are things that we will address. And I am optimistic that, that we will be able to slowly move forward and, and be able to get to a point where we're addressing some of our, our needs of our special populations and making sure that we're doing it in, in an appropriate way and in a thoughtful way.
Thank you.
Okay. So, anyone else? Just?
Yeah, great job, Doc. I mean, we as a community needed to hear a lot of the things that you said tonight. And, and I understand that the information coming from DESI has been slow and it's difficult. And, and, you know, a lot of people are looking to a lot of other people with science and medical backgrounds to give us the best available information. And, and thank you for putting it in the context of, you know, what other schools are doing around the world. This, this is a world issue and, and giving us the information you have and putting a plan together with these various task force, I think you called it. um with these various task force, I think you called it, um and and getting it from the, you know, policy level all the way right down to the classroom level, because that is going to be the monumental task that is before us. And there's not a lot of time, so I just want to thank you for for not only what you conveyed, but how you conveyed it.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman.
Anyone else? Any other committee members like to speak? Okay. Dr. Vidal, thank you. That was a very good presentation. It really was. It gave us a lot of information. I think people are going to be able to understand going forward uh how how things will unfold, ever mindful that it could change in in an hour. And uh really do appreciate that. And I'm glad you made you wait till the end of the. This was really good timing. Now, everybody, everybody's awake again.
The last thing I will say is that in my conversation tomorrow with principals, they will be reaching out to families and there'll be information about ways to join these groups. So didn't want to put too much out tonight, but this information will be forthcoming and will continue to provide information. But the uh the manner in which families will be able to join the groups is we'll be pushing that out through the building principals. The closer we get to the kids, this it seems to uh be a little bit of a better uh communication model. Pushing it out from the central office doesn't always work, but they seem to listen to the principals and especially the teachers.
Thank you. That's the that's the truth. Actually, is this, would this be possible to be linked on our website?
Yes, I'd like to do that. So we'll 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 push this out tomorrow and we'll try to put it out through social media as well and and just get this initial guidance out, just because I think it's good information for families to have in their hands. And then we'll be communicating additionally, um you know, just just some other how to join these groups or and we'll do some surveys and and we'll continue to solicit information from parents throughout the summer.
Very good. Thank you. And I know as a school committee member, this will be helpful because we can direct people to look at this and and they'll have great understanding of it. So thank you. Okay, um the next item, city logo on recycling bins. Mr. Hockman.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Dunn. Um I think the mayor, I brought this up a few meetings ago and the mayor was looking into this and I was hoping to get an answer. Uh for some reason, Bay State Textiles uh on the bins that they have on school property have the city logo on them, and and I don't understand why. Um Bay State Textiles just coincidentally, I believe, has some bins in Linfield Public Schools. Uh and a friend of mine, who I think is a colleague of Mr. Miko's and a former colleague of Mr. Vidal's, who teaches in Revere, um posted a picture of the recycling bin um in Linfield on social media, and it has a nice little uh, you know, um logo or it may not be a logo, but a picture on the front of the bin saying, you know, we support uh Linfield PTOs. And and I think that's what the Bay State Textiles does in PBD as well. And I'm just curious as to why they would have a city of PBD logo on their bins, however. So I guess we'll hold this till the next meeting. Hopefully, the mayor will be able to join us at that point and and give us some explanation.
Okay, thank you. Yep, we'll keep it on the agenda. And then the next item is yours as well. Um Mr. Hockman, in-person meetings.
Yeah, uh if we can hold this to uh Ms. Cameron, I spoke to her a couple of weeks ago. Um she was hoping to get some more information by tonight. Um I don't know that it came through. I haven't had a, I really haven't had a chance to talk to her in any event. So we'll put this over for the next meeting, which I'm remaining hopeful is where I can see all you guys. But we'll talk about it.
All right. Thank you. And then finally, use of school buildings.
Yeah, so this one we do have a little more substance, too. Um and at first, I want to apologize to Ms. Chiota. I I think I've been mispronouncing your name since we've met. I call you Chiota, so I apologize. Um in any event, uh you know, I mentioned this a little bit earlier today in this meeting. Um you know, that we we maintain what occurs within school buildings. Um and and I am concerned, and and this is something that was brought up by a few people at public participation. I am concerned um that there may not, uh or currently, that there's a less robust summer program through the Special Education Department through no fault of the Special Education Department. Uh so in in and I, through Ms. Dunn, uh if I can ask Ms. Chi- Chiota, uh what what, if anything, can we do to support uh your staff and you as an administrator in getting these necessary programs off the ground and in person uh tomorrow? I I start by being ambitious and work backwards.
I I hear that. And and quite frankly, Mr. Hockman, nobody wants to be in school and in front of students more than I want to be in school and in front of students. The challenge is the policy coming in from the state and being compliant with all of the regulations, working with um in compliance with the Department of Public Health um and trying to get programs um and policies and procedures as well as trainings available to staff to be able to um to make sure that we're meeting all of the requirements. Um you you heard Dr. Vidal this evening um let you know that we still don't have our final guidance for summer program. Our summer services start July sixth, um so it it uh July seventh. Um so the more timely information we can get so that we can put procedures in place, the better. Um unfortunately, right now, a lot of that information is coming in very slowly. We are working with uh Ms. Cameron um and Ms. Wolf through the Department of Public Health to make sure that all of our procedures and protocols are in place. We have um it Ms. uh Crompton, who is the summer coordinator, has worked tirelessly to put programs in place to make sure that we're working on developing those capacities with students, the hand washing, increasing um increasing tolerance for wearing the facial coverings or masks. Um and that is part of the remote uh learning process as we're moving forward. Our goals have been to try and bring students in um for face-to-face services, but to do that in a way that meets both the students' needs um and provides a level of comfort, security, and safety. Comfort being one of the concerns that we're taking a look at because one of the restrictions is the use of um the use of air conditioning um and having to maintain open windows throughout the time period that students are in school. And when we're talking eighty and those eighty and ninety degree days to have students in a restricted space, wearing face coverings for extended periods of time, um it is very concerning. So that's something that we've been working toward.
Thank you.
I I don't know that that's an answer to how do we get in tomorrow, but it is part of what we've been been doing to try and make that as available as possible.
Yeah, no, thank you. Uh and I I've, I I I know a lot of your staff. I speak to a lot of your staff um fairly regularly. I know that they're eager to um get summer programs underway. And I know that everyone is concerned with safety and and procedures and protocols. And and I've spoken to several parents um who, we've heard a few of them tonight, you know, are also extremely eager to have their their children uh in programs that are necessary. Uh a lot of people are worried about regression. It's real. We're going to see it significantly this fall if we do wind up back in person in school, um particularly, not just in the special education population, but in the the entire school district. Um it it's, it's just a little more real um with the types of, with with the students who have needs that we're talking about that that participate in the special education program. So I'm I'm happy that we're working towards that goal. I I'm I'm hopeful that it's sooner rather than later. Um the air conditioning issue, you know, maybe we, you know, Mr. Scanlon talked about us saving money in utilities earlier in the meeting. Maybe air conditioners are on twenty-four hours in those buildings, you know, in those rooms, if we're able to do that, you know, we, you know, we can um, we can solve some of those little problems. I'm I'm more worried about impediments that are being presented by um any individuals or or any other uh staff members that are preventing us from getting back to in-person um special education summer program. So I'm happy to hear there weren't any of those. Uh and that was really the focus of of this agenda item. I'm I'm ecstatic that FKO is back in the buildings um and that they're taking the proper procedures and protocols um to enable students who uh need care during the day, to get care during the day. Um so, thank you.
Mrs. Carpenter.
Thank you. Um so just a couple of points to the use of our buildings um and to Mrs. Chiota. Um you know, I'm definitely of the mind that, you know, the earlier and the sooner we can get some of these uh programs into our schools for these at-risk children, the special education, I'm definitely, you know, in favor of that. So I'm hoping that, you know, something comes out for you soon where there's guidelines that you can follow and open up to those children. But I do want to point out maybe to the public and just try to explain that FKO, who is in our building, falls under different guidelines than what we currently um what what we have to follow as a public school. So FKO falls under the uh Department of Early Education and Care, where the public school is under the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So the ECE, the Early Childhood Education, their guidelines and their reopening guidelines have been released and they were allowed to open um as of Monday. So that is why and how we have um a program like that in our schools. As most of the parents know, they operate before and after school, and um they run our summer programs. In that, and their their guidelines are different from ours, and that's why they are in our buildings right now, and they are following very strict guidelines. Um you know, with minimums in the room and and certain ages for face coverings and those type of things. And and from what I understand, you know, we don't have those, as Mrs. Chiota just said, right now, to open up for the programs that some of the parents are looking for. But in that same vein, I'm kind of curious, and I'm not sure who I'm asking, maybe if FKO is listening. But there was a time when we heard a presentation from FKO, and they did talk to us about how they have some programs that handle special education, and they had hired some one-on-ones. And I'm wondering if um in the meantime, if some of these children that need that care in our special education can be helped by FKO at all, because that is something that they did promote in one of their presentations to us. And they fall, depending on the child's age, they would fall under that category of um early education and care and be able to attend their um summer after-school programs, those type of things. So I would be interested if that's maybe a placeholder until we get our own programs going for some of these kids that need it. Um so I don't know if Mrs. Chiota can reach out to them or if you know anything about that.
If I may, Ms. Madam Chair?
Yes, go right ahead.
Um so yes, I I am familiar with um some of the requirements, the the differences um that we're talking about with FKO. Our students that are coming in for summer program, for extended school year programs, are students that receive an 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 intensive level of service that typically don't qualify for FKO. Um many do, um but but many do not qualify for that. And the parent, the 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 folks that are reaching out um with such concern and and such passion are really those parents that know that FKO is not an option for them. Um and students really struggle with the social distancing, may require physical um interventions. It it is that level of support that FKO would not be able to meet under their very strict guidelines. And we continue to take a look at through com- uh working with the Department of Public Health and the guidelines that we do have available to be able to um to be able to meet those those particular needs in a way that's safe for all for all of our students and all of our staff as well. Um and I I'd also like to add, one of the, one of the largest barriers is um transportation and not having the transportation guidelines. Where FKO does not, is not required to provide transportation. We are.
Right, yeah. There there was definitely some, you know, big hurdles. But if there was any any way they could help out in any manner, I know they did have that capacity. But um I'll be following as well, and any support you need to get those programs going, you know, I uh I hope we can accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Hockman.
Yeah, if no one else wants to speak on the subject, I I'll close it out. If if, you know, one of the concerns I have with the use of buildings is that we have a contractual obligation with a bargaining unit that says that custodian needs to be present in the building uh in order for a building to be used. The budget that's been presented to us, or at least version nine, has custodial salaries and tradespeople salaries being removed from the school department and being handed over to the city. I have some concerns with all of that tied together. Uh so either we need to uh negotiate where we are relieved of the obligation to have a custodian present in buildings when uh buildings are open, or we need to ha- maintain um some degree of authority over custodians and tradespeople. I think we're going to take that up quite a bit in the budget sessions that are going to um be moving forward. Um but I just wanted to get that out there, that the two reasons I brought up this agenda item are those, the the contractual obligations, and also the the true need to get these uh special education programs off the ground as quickly as guidance comes in and and the administration is able to um put a safe and and healthy plan together.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Is there any other discussion on this? Okay, all good points and very interesting information. Thank you. Okay. If there's nothing else, we have the section of items for the next agenda. And one item that we really do need to discuss is setting our next meeting. With with the mayor is not present this evening, I'll be honest. I would like to just ask him if he, uh if he wouldn't mind, we would be able to be contacted by um emails to set, set up the next meeting. And uh under our own bylaws, we we normally have two meetings per month. We are allowed to go to one meeting per month in July and August. However, this year is really different. And I think uh I personally am going to see if we can have two meetings in each of those months, just because of the uh not just the amount of work that's going to occur, but also because of the rapidly changing issues that we are facing. And I think that um to work with Dr. Vidal as well, he's coming in and he's going to have a lot of work going on. And I think that we all just need to pull together and work together. And um that's where I'll come from as far as scheduling the meetings. But I I do think that we we, and we are allowed to schedule meetings via an email. So if uh if everyone could uh wait for that, I think that's what we will do, and we will uh schedule the meeting appropriately. And of course, those will always be posted in in a notice to the public. As far as budget meetings, those as well could be handled in the same fashion. And uh we will keep it on as an agenda item on our regular meetings. But yes, we probably have to have specific meetings about the budget. There are some really big issues coming forward at all, from all directions. We may have, we may have to have all kinds of different kinds of of special meetings as far as reopening the schools and uh, you know, discussing ceremonies. And it's going to be a fun summer. So I think if there's nothing further, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Hockman, and a second by anybody out there? Second by Mr. Olympia. All right, thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Welcome, Dr. Vidal. Your eyes now. Good night, everyone, and happy Fourth of July.